America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy towards us. We pray that you would bless this meeting, bless our city council, bless our mayor, our police, fire departments, everybody that works to make this a great place to live. We pray for your continued blessings upon this city. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Bless you, Tish.
Thank you. I'll get there one day.
We'll call.
Torrance?
Here.
Ally?
Here.
Langwell?
Here.
Holland?
Here.
Krauskopf?
Here.
And everyone's in attendance.
I forgot one.
Oh, sorry, Justin. I'm looking at an old one.
I'm sorry.
Maybe that's why I'm not blessed.
I'm sorry, Councilman. I didn't know you were here, though. Next, we'll have the reading and correcting of the journal.
We suspend the rules and dispense with reading and correcting of the journal.
Second.
Suspended by Councilman Krauskopf and seconded by Councilman Ally to suspend the rules and dispense of the reading and correcting of the journal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have communications. Cheryl?
Okay, a report for Peru Civic Center for August 2018. Total number of guests, 167. Total meals served was 125. Money taken in for the meals is $1,292.50. Rent was $156. Paying was $110. And total pay to the city was $226.13. Good money. Thank you.
Okay, very good. It's like we have a position that we need to... Do we have a letter or is he here or...
He's up here.
Okay.
He doesn't.
Okay. If we do have a letter, I think that it was in your... Please come up, pack it. Yeah. No, I don't think so. You got one?
Yeah.
You got one? I didn't get one. I can give you mine if you want. It's towards the front of it. Wait, that's the letter?
Did you get a copy, Mike? You had everything you need?
I provided information to the clerk requesting this opportunity, and I was just told I should be here in case there are any questions.
That's a good thing. Yep.
Mike would be the board's representative.
Yeah, I believe there's two...
What key?
I believe there's two appointees on the board from the city council.
No.
Other than just one? Okay. Yeah. You state that you hope you'll find your professional background easily allows me to be a vital asset to... Can you expound on that a little bit? I don't see anything in about your background.
We have a...
Huh?
We have a lineup of his qualifications.
I don't have any of this stuff.
Outstanding.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's good.
I move we appoint Mike to the Board of Works.
I'll second that.
See, it's the building appeals. I'm sorry, zoning appeals, right?
Zoning.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm sorry, yes. That's correct.
Okay. Any questions? Did anybody see his qualifications?
Yes, I did.
I guess I was the only one that didn't have one, so... Okay.
I never saw Mike.
Never saw either. There you are, fellow. I can see. There's a letter in here.
Yeah.
There's what he's done.
Okay.
I'll let her peruse that for a second before we take a vote.
Everyone else get a copy of it.
Yes. Of it. He's got some pretty good qualifications.
Mm-hmm.
Really good qualifications.
Any questions up here? Questions from the audience?
Can you summarize his qualifications real quick?
Sure. Strong experience working with laws, codes permitting, and regulatory agencies. Planned and managed deferred maintenance and capital improvement programs. Training experience in coordinating mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and civil systems. Distinguished background working in the construction field and especially familiar with safety considerations. Assisted in the planning and commissioning of major building projects. Extensive experience in planning, development, management, design, and construction of buildings. Excellent background on a variety of projected types, including new renovation, preservation, and maintenance, and with housing, schools, airports, museums, utility plants, city halls, state office buildings, computer facilities, and churches. Is proficient in software. Has a Bachelor of Architecture degree from Cornell. University of Maryland, real estate sales. Laney College for AutoCAD and drafting. UCal Berkeley, construction litigation. Ivy Tech in Logan'sport, and continuing education. Makes it look very quiet. Very impressive.
I'd like to say that Mike and I... Mike is a member of the Peru Garden Club, and that's how we sort of relate to each other through gardening. And I knew his father. I sort of helped take care of his father before he passed. So Mike is just a good friend of mine. And his father lived here years ago with my mom, so it's been quite a while. But I highly recommend Mike.
Peru, 1940.
1940s, yeah. For telling our age.
I attend a lot of these meetings, and I think you're very much needed.
A roll call.
There's a motion by Justin, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And seconded by Cheryl.
Cheryl.
Okay.
Holland?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes. Congratulations. Appreciate your service. Now, Tom, it's a good thing you're here, or you wouldn't want to make that motion. Want me to make another one? Okay, we have Makita proposing a forgivable loan.
Yeah, I spoke with Jim Brook earlier today. We're going to get the actual contract for us that we have with the company, and we'll bring that to the next meeting along with the ordinance.
So we're going to just pass that right now?
No, we were just going to do it next meeting. We have some of the information from Makita, but we don't have the ordinance, and we don't have the contract, so...
So what was your intent by putting that?
There was some miscommunication. The information was passed to Tish. She put it on communication, but we didn't get the ordinance from him yet. So I don't know if it was intended that we were going to write the ordinance, but typically Makita will write those. So I think that's where there was a little confusion there. So we're just going to bring it up next meeting.
So you're just talking about making us aware of it?
Yeah, right. We were going to ask for it to be introduced this meeting, and we got some information before you, but we'll have to wait until next meeting.
Okay. Then we'll have something to look forward to in October.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Next on the agenda is the... You're introducing the budget.
Yes, and I'm just going to ask if the council can add ordinance 21 to the agenda. Ordinance 21 will be the budget, so we can go ahead and get that introduced tonight.
Okay, so we'll wait and catch it up under new business then?
Okay. And then we can...
We'd do it under...
Right. New business, so if you have any questions then we'll bring it up there.
Okay.
All right. Next, we'll move on to unfinished business. We have ordinance 18, 2018.
Ordinance 18, 2018, and ordinance to amend wage, ordinance 29, 2017.
Let's see, we considered that last month, right?
Yes, we did.
All right. A move we adopt ordinance 18, 2018. Second. Suspended by Councilman Krauskopf and seconded by Councilman Holland to adopt ordinance 18, 2018. Okay, and refresh it again, what we're doing.
I would like to raise the annual salary for the clerks in my office. I have lost two really, really good people because they left for a higher wage. I couldn't begrudge them for that, obviously, because everybody needs more money, right? So I started digging in and finding out that we were pretty much grossly underpaying the payroll clerk and the accounts payable receivable clerk based on what other towns and cities do in the state of Indiana. I sent a packet with you guys the last time with some of the averages, and I found that we were quite a bit under. I would like to point out that I am getting rid of the third position completely and totally to pay for this wage increase for my gals. So we will actually be saving money in the clerk treasurer's budget if this passes, but we will be paying a more lucrative wage that if I were to lose someone in the future that I would have better powers to find a suitable candidate for the position. These positions are a lot of responsibility, they're high pressure with deadlines, there's a very low tolerance for errors. I just find that the girls in my office now do a really good job, and if something were to happen for the city of Peru to be able to put someone else in that position, we would have to be competitive with the job market.
So we're raising their salaries for the remainder of 2018 to what?
Yes, I gave that... I don't have the number right in front of me. I gave that to you.
Thirty-seven, four forty a year.
Thirty-seven, four forty.
Eighteen dollars a year versus fifteen.
Okay, thirty-seven, four forty.
So it's a difference between fifteen dollars an hour to eighteen dollars an hour.
Eighteen dollars an hour.
And if you remember, the packet that I gave you last month had all of the averages of the people that responded to my query about what theirs were making. And it's still quite a bit under what theirs are making, but I feel like...
Twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent lower than every other comparable city.
Do the other cities pay... Get paid lunchtime and all the benefits that...
They absolutely do. Yes, they absolutely do.
I know that the... I believe all four of the people up on the second floor, the administrative assistants were all paid the same. Are these two going to be higher than the other two now?
They will. They will. This is me... This is my department. This is not me saying that the other people on the second floor are not worth as much or that I want my department to earn more. It's just I need to be able to take care of my department, and the way that I can take care of my department is to make sure that I have the hiring capability when it comes to salaries to keep qualified people in that position. I also did have the ability that I don't know if the other departments have of cutting a position and making my department work with three instead of two so that it's not It's not in addition to our budgeted amount. It costs a lot of money to get these girls in here and get them trained, and it's a lot of hard work. I've got a gal that is in the position now. She's very good. She stepped up in our time of need when we lost the last gal. If you remember correctly, I put her resignation letter in your last packet just to show you that she liked working here and she liked working for the city of Peru, but we were not competitive with the salaries. I think that the only way that I'm going to be able to keep good qualified people and not have to start over with a new person every year or so is to give them a salary that will keep them here in the city of Peru. It does cost a lot of money and a lot of time to get these gals trained. We're trying to get payroll back in-house. We are going to do payroll back in-house in October, which is where we want it to be if all goes well tonight.
I have a concern about the other two clerks, you know, because right now they're basically all making the same amount, and at first I...
I would have to jump in there and say that they don't all do the same work. I mean, we... They all do good work.
Right.
And they're all valuable, and they're all important, but they do not all do the same amount of work. We have to stay up on current labor laws to keep the city from being sued a lot. We have to stay current on all of the payroll tax laws, the FICA and med laws. We have an incredible deadline, every two weeks and monthly. There's more deadlines. There's more continuing education. There's more training that needs to be done. The rules change almost quarterly on what we can do. So to compare the two, honestly, in my opinion, is comparing apples to oranges.
Is there any way that since we will have some money left after you do these two raises, that you could split some of that extra money with the other clerk?
I think that's a fine idea. That's up to you guys. I think that's a fine idea.
I mean, I just think this could cause hurt feelings, you know? And the other two people are good employees.
Absolutely, and I will never argue that. And it was not out of my mind that it might cause heart feelings. And I certainly don't want that. I love every girl up there. I certainly do not want that to happen. I just have to make sure that I can keep my seats filled with qualified people. But if you would like to take the savings and spread it between the other girls, I think that's wonderful.
I got a question.
Sure.
Someplace along the way we were doing budgets last year, you was farming out payroll. Is that right?
Okay, so Commerford and Company have been doing our payroll. Farming out sounds like a very negative connotation.
Well, I know what you're saying.
So what I was doing was making sure the payroll was getting done until I could find a qualified applicant. It was a long, arduous process. You can't just take anybody on, Terry, because if you do, you go through the heartache of getting them trained up and then losing them to a better-paying job. It takes three times the work for my department to farm out our payroll because I have to in turn put every bit of information into spreadsheets and get it uploaded in about three different ways, where it would be so much better if we could just do it in Keystone like we're supposed to do. Yeah.
You're not going to be doing it. You're going to pull it in-house, right?
Absolutely. We are on schedule and trained to do it in October as long as this passes. But I, you know, like I said, I need this money to pay this person to stay here.
Yeah, I will say I was ignorant to the amount of work it takes to have a third party do the payroll. Tish walked me through the process, and it is a very complicated, multi-step process to get... To go from... Because if you have somebody like Commerford or anybody private doing the payroll, they're doing it, and there are programs that they use in the private industry. The state only accepts it in a specific program and format. So Tish, like she said, she has to take all of the data from, you know, all the 120 employees, put it into a spreadsheet, but then she has to upload it into two different state programs. And every one of those steps is a step that opens you up to more clerical error, too. So if there's one thing that, you know, goes wrong, now you've multiplied that out. If it is done in-house, when they put it into one of the two programs, I don't know exactly how this works.
When we build it into payroll, we literally just... We have two programs. We have fund, and we have payroll. When we build the payroll in payroll, we hit a button. It automatically transfers everything to the correct appropriation line items so that we know that our money's correct all the time. I've been going through the process of putting it there and uploading it to Empers, which is... I mean, it does open up the potential for error, so it's very time-consuming. If we get it back into Keystone, you've got to understand, sending it out to Commerford was a necessary step at the time to make sure that our wonderful employees got paid. It wasn't ideal, but it was what I had to do at the time. Now, we have been taking the classes together. We've been doing the training together. Now we know how to do the payroll. Now we are ready to take it back. So all I need to do is make sure that I have enough money. And believe me, the money that I'm pitching for you guys to pay whoever is in those seats is far less than what we were paying to farm out the payroll.
What were we paying?
We were paying approximately $19,000 a year, which was still less than a salary, but there was a lot of upstart fee that we had to pay because they had to build a system for us to have our employees' records and deductions and things like that.
And it was still almost a full-time position to then take what Commerford was doing, then upload it into all the state programs that don't speak with each other. You have to manually put into all the different programs once it gets back to Tish's office, too.
I spent evenings... I do those during the evenings at my house because I'm not interrupted as much there, and it's very much looking at numbers and making sure that you don't make... Trying not to make mistakes, things like that. So you have to do it when you're free of distraction. So I've spent many, many, many evenings doing that.
Well, you know, I spend a lot of time up on that second floor. And by doing this, I'm becoming... Of course, I've known all these gals before, but I can't fault any of them other than I hope that I know Veranda Department, you know, that works with getting some of these houses torn down, spends a lot of time, and I'm sure she takes a lot of that home with her. So I know she works extra hard up there. So I hope at budget time, we can come back and consider some of these other wages, you know, if this passes.
It's going to be a trickle-down effect. Everyone knows the importance of their job, and they do it just because it's their job. And like I said, it's going to be a trickle-down. Other departments don't make that, so we'll have to consider that, too, I guess.
Well, I would say that of all of our full-time employees, the employees on the second floor are... I'm trying to think. I think they might be the lowest-paid full-time employees we have in the city.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
And their jobs are very, very important. And I don't intend to make... To create a trickle-down effect, although, Jan, I understand what you're saying there completely, I'm trying to, you know... The mayor brought up to me that, you know, we want to give everybody what they deserve. We really do. Even the police department was offered a little bit more of a raise if they didn't need as many guys. They said that they would rather have the guys that they have and not take a raise. So I'm not doing anything here that hasn't been offered to other people. I am getting rid of a person in order to be able to pay these ladies, and they are not going to be the highest-paid people even with the raise. They're not even going to be close to the highest-paid people. They're going to be paid what the United States labor standard says. This is what the going rate for what my gals do is. And still, I brought it in at 25% less than the labor market says that it should be at. So it's not that I'm giving them more than they deserve. It is a big amount of money all at one time, but the problem is, is it's gone on too long, and now is the time... I mean, we have, what, a 2% unemployment rate right now? It is competitive. The job market is competitive. It's hard to get people, and it's hard to keep people. And if I'm going to get and keep people, this is just something I feel like I need to do. I'd like to remind you that, you know, I've never taken a raise with the city, and I'm not asking for something for myself. I'm asking for these ladies to be paid what they earn because they earn a lot more than they're being paid.
And I will say, too, to the effect of the other employees on the second floor, and like Tish said, I wish I could pay all of our city employees far more than what we do because when it comes to cities of our size, we have great benefits, and that is one of the things that we can say to our employees is, hey, we have a great health insurance plan. We have HSA and all this stuff. And the ladies on the second floor, they also do get Wednesday afternoons off. So, I mean, that's a significant bonus, too, in that position. To the building department, we have already added another administrative assistant. Rebecca Thoden works in the building department, too, and that was an entire... Another position that we put into the building department to help with the workload because the building department absolutely works an incredible amount, and they're doing an amazing job in the city. The issue... The problem... The root of the problem that I saw in the building department was there was so much work to be done, we had to add another position. So would it be nice to give those ladies a raise, too? Absolutely. We have had a significant increase in our building department's budget also to accommodate things we're trying to do there, so...
Is there any way that if we pass this, that we could consider giving them, if not the same amount, but a portion of what these ladies make are going to be given, a certain percent raise?
I believe that's up to you.
I would say that we would like to do that. One of the things that we are doing is with the building department's cleanup, we're also taking in a lot more in fines and fees. That's how we justified the addition of Mrs. Thoden coming up and joining the building department. You know, that's a significant cost increase that we took on. Like I said, that is supported by the fines and the tickets that we take in through that department. I hate to expand too much in our ongoing budget. It doesn't go away. I don't ever plan on removing that position. I think that's a position that is needed and will be needed, but it's also one of those things that we have to look at those revenues over a period of time, is that amount. Because right now, we're bringing in about $80,000, $80,000 to $100,000 in fines and fees through the building department. Obviously, that pays for the new position there. It also pays for the expansion of the code enforcement from part-time to full-time. Is that money always going to be that much that we bring in through fines? I don't know. And that's a question I have in my mind going forward of what is that long-term income coming in from those fines that currently is supporting that expansion? So like I said, there's plenty of money there now for that expansion, and I think that there will always be a significant portion of that expansion that will be paid for by fines, but I hate to get too froggy with jumping up the amount we pay out for all these.
Other questions?
Does any of the other council members think that that would be fair to even consider the other two clerks?
We don't. We'll discuss that later.
Oh, we don't do that?
That's not part of this...
Okay.
That's not part of this ordinance.
Okay. So we'll just be voting on these two only?
Yeah, voting on this.
Yeah.
Yes, as it was presented last month. These two people.
I think if we approve this, we're going to approach giving the rest of the second-floor girls... the second-floor girls a raise.
I guess that's what I was asking.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not part of this ordinance, so, but, yeah. Further comments? Any comments? Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskop.
Yes.
Okay, and a motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, under new business, we have Resolution 12, 2018.
Resolution 12, 2018, a resolution establishing rate tracking factor for the municipal electric utility of the city of Peru, Indiana.
Move we consider Resolution 12, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and second by Councilman Guston to consider Resolution 12, 2018. Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskop.
Yes. Move we adopt Resolution 12, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and second by Councilman Holland to adopt Resolution 12, 2018.
We're getting a decrease in the electric, electric costs, so, shoot, we got the raises paid for. Point zero zero one eight five four cents per kilowatt hour.
Let's do what we can.
I got a check today for six cents. Did you really?
Yes.
Somebody's giving you their two cents worth three times.
I got a bill for four hundred and eleven dollars for last month.
But I got six cents back.
What was that about? That's what I'm paying for, you keep getting money back.
Costs more to send it. Okay, so this is the quarterly, the quarterly rate tracking, standard, standard business that comes before the council every quarter, and this time, we're getting a minor, 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 minor decrease. Uh, roll call.
Holland.
Yes, I want more.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskop.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Ordinance 19, 2018.
Ordinance 19, 2018, and ordinance for additional appropriations.
Move we consider Ordinance 19, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and second by Councilman Guston to consider Ordinance 19, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskop.
Yes. And that'll come back next month.
Next, we have Ordinance 20, 2018.
Ordinance 20, 2018, and ordinance for additional appropriations.
Move we consider Ordinance 20, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and second by Councilman Guston to consider Ordinance 20, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskop.
Yes.
And that also will come back next month. And I would ask the council if they could add an Ordinance 21, 2018, to the agenda.
A move we add Ordinance 21, 2018, to the agenda for review of the 2019 budget.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and second by Councilman Guston to add Ordinance 21, 2018, to our agenda. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally. Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskop.
Yes. Mr. Attorney, we're getting ourselves in trouble by not having this, had this advertised that the budget was going to be presented tonight?
No, they, I don't know if you remember from last year, but they have changed the advertisement, advertisement requirements. It only has to be uploaded onto Gateway and do an advertisement there, which was done in time. As long as this was considered, submitted, considered, and adopted at regular scheduled meetings, then we're perfectly within the law, because that changed two years ago.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I just asked three times, because I felt like I was doing something wrong. I'm not.
Move we consider Ordinance 21, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and second by Councilwoman Lee to consider Ordinance 21, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally. Langwell.
Yes.
Kroskop.
Yes.
And next meeting, the October meeting, we will have fifteen minutes prior to the regular schedule.
That's all we're going to talk about, was fifteen minutes for the budget.
If you guys would like to talk about it now, or do a meeting between?
I think fifteen minutes is kind of short-shifting in the budget proposal. I think we need to at least have some more insight as to what we're doing, what things have changed, what's, what's been increased, what's been decreased, because we're responsible for spending the money.
In, what, two weeks, would that work? Can we get ahold of you guys for a meeting in two weeks?
Hope you're out of town.
Three weeks, or one week? Or the week before or after, work for you, Tom?
Next week, I'm here next week.
Is everyone here next week?
Seventeenth.
On Monday.
Seventeenth.
Sure.
Aren't you going to Hawaii next week?
Monday night, the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Regular time, six o'clock?
That works, see?
My time.
That's good.
Tish is away for next meeting, so we have this in each line item. Is there any way that you can give us the actual budget, like, you know, the ten-thousand-foot view, and then twenty-seventeen and eighteen number? Like, this is what we approved in seventeen, this is what we're moving to in eighteen?
Yes, well, I could do that, but I would just direct you to Gateway online. Gateway has every city and town's budget from, for the last, at least, ten years. So our budgets are there, so you can go and see exactly what was passed in 2016, seventeen, eighteen. You can print those off, take a look at those, if you'd like to, but that's all public information on Gateway.
Well, sure. I mean, I certainly could, I could come up there and ask you, can I set your computer and pull it down, too?
Yes, absolutely.
I know.
Are you asking me to print it for you?
No, I'm just asking, can you print, like, the main line items? Uh, so like the, for instance, twenty-three seventy-nine communal capital fund?
Okay.
Like the fund line item? And just the, like, how much is in that?
So you want the Form 1s for the last several years?
Just last year and this year.
I think, I think as a, as a courtesy to some of the council members who aren't as computer literate, it would be nice to-
I would absolutely love to do that for you guys. Everyone, every time I print something, somebody says, oh, I already did that. So if you want me to print seventeen, I'm looking at you, Tom, I'm looking at you. If you want seventeen and eighteen, is that what you guys would like?
Yeah.
Two thousand seventeen and eighteen?
Yep, that gives you three here.
And can I do that for all of you guys, or is anybody going to do it on their own? Pardon me?
I think I have mine.
At a girl.
I do, too, because I looked it up yesterday.
Well, I have mine as well. It's just a different form of them.
Blaine, are you talking about these?
The Form 1s.
Are you talking about Form 1s? The Form 1s are in there, they're in the middle.
No, he's talking about last year's.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if he noticed, the Form 1s are in this packet, like you usually get.
Yeah, but you, he was asking, what, he'd like to compare the one for 2018 to the proposed one for 2019.
Right, yeah, what he would-
I just didn't know if he realized that.
Yeah, we've got, we've got those.
And would you guys like those in your mailbox this week, or would you like me to email those to you as well?
Email, preferably.
I like mine in my mailbox.
Your email box, you can put mine in.
Yeah.
You'll never get it.
I will email everyone when you, when I know that they're in the mailboxes, how about that?
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And we'll advertise for a special meeting on next Monday, the seventeenth, at six p.m. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Based on what we just passed, ten minutes ago, on page one of the budget, it says, "Two deputy clerks at thirty-one thousand two-eleven," that would be incorrect, no?
Yes, yes.
Because I saw that and it didn't-
I didn't want it when we-
Add up to seventy-four thousand, and I was-
Yeah, I think that's wonderful. I didn't want to make any assumptions before it was passed, because that would just be arrogant. So, I will make that change.
What time next Monday?
Six.
Six.
Six p.m.
Six.
Six p.m.
Six o'clock?
Yeah.
Six a.m.
Not six a.m. Jeez.
Definitely not.
Smart aleck.
Yeah, my for fills.
We know where you live. Come see me.
Hey, there's also, on page twenty, I know we're not trying to go picking line item by line item right now, but I'm just curious, because it came up, because there's two cars being asked for right now, at seventy-six thousand, and on, on page twenty, it says three police cars for forty thousand, why do you-
Are you looking at the funds, because we pay for police cars and out of different funds sometimes? I'm not sure.
Good Lord, I don't know.
Which page are you talking about, Blaine?
Those are, those are leases. If you look, it says rentals.
Yeah, there you go.
So those are lease payments for next year.
Okay.
Look right in the middle of the column, see if there's-
I would like to bring up that if you do the math for the seventy-four thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars, that is with the raise that was just voted on.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said, it just didn't make sense, thirty-one times two wasn't seventy-four.
Sure.
But now that it is.
Yeah, because we can always lower it, but we can lower the budget, but we can't raise the budget. So I put the higher amount in, but I kept the number the same in case it didn't go through. That way, if we lowered it, everything would be the same. So I will change that. Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Well, we can always lower the budget if it was passed.
Three police cars.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
We can always low-
You said we could-
I said we can raise it, we can lower it.
Anything further?
We're still doing the leases.
Mike?
Okay, but I thought we agreed to get rid of all that.
Yeah, shouldn't be the last payment. Anything from the audience?
Good.
Anything further up here? Uh, move adjourned?
Second.